Good evening, and I'd like to call, hello, everybody. Good evening, and I'd like to call the October 21st, 2025 meeting of the North Bend City Council to order. Can the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Protem Mark Jocelyn.
Present.
Councilmember Brendan Elwood. Councilmember Alan Gottheuf.
Here.
Councilmember Heather Cullen.
Here.
Councilmember Christina Rustic.
Present.
Councilmember Susan Torgerson.
Here.
Councilmember Errol Tramalata.
Here.
All are present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. I have a very special request tonight to lead roll call. We've got some very splendid individuals in the room tonight. I wish them to lead us tonight, if you're comfortable.
Flag's loose.
What did I say, roll call? Yeah, that's.
Well, they are here.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance, let's have some fun. Thank you, everybody.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilor. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Richmond, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you so much. Okay, everybody, welcome, and everybody at the council table, thank you very much for being here, and staff. Before we move on to consent agenda, um, let's see, we have five items on our consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay, thank you, motion by Mr. Gottheuf and second by Mr. Brendan Elwood, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Before we move on to audience participation, as indicated on tonight's agenda, if you're attending remotely and would like to submit public comment, please submit your correct comments by in-person drop-off, mail, fax, or email to clerks@northbendwa.gov by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. We are no longer taking public comments, for those attending remotely via Zoom unless they have reached out to our city clerk in advance of the meeting to request accommodation. We'll now move on to audience participation, since we will no longer be taking public comment after every item on the main agenda, now will be the time to come forward to the podium and comment on any agenda items or any other item you wish to speak about. If you are here to speak regarding AB 25-111, ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way along Northwest 8th Street, or AB 25-112 ordinance setting 2026 property tax levy, please hold your comments until the public hearings later in the meeting. If you have requested accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak through the virtual platform, please raise your hand, and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak for the record. Anybody tonight? All quiet, anybody online?
Not tonight.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we'll now move on to announcements, presentations, and appointments. Starting off right away is item number six, I'm very proud to make this proclamation for Purple Heart City. Let me begin the process by reading it to you all. Okay, whereas on August 7th, 1782, George Washington established the Badge of Military Merit, which was the first medal authorized for enlisted soldiers in the Continental Army to recognize a singularly meritorious action by a soldier. And whereas on February 22nd of 1932, US Army Chief of Staff Douglas MacArthur established the Purple Heart Award in the spirit of the Badge of Military Merit in honor of George Washington's bicentennial birthday, and authorized the award for soldiers in the United States Army for soldiers who are wounded or lose their lives in military action, and August 7th is annually recognized as Purple Heart Day. And whereas in 1942, President Franklin D. Roosevelt expanded the Purple Heart Award to other branches of the United States Military by authorizing the Navy Department to award the Purple Heart to personnel wounded or killed in action, beginning with the attack on Pearl Harbor on December 7th, 1941. Today, the Purple Heart is authorized for people serving in all branches of the United States Military who are wounded or lose their lives in military actions. Whereas following the attack at Pearl Harbor, until the day she passed away, Eleanor Roosevelt carried in her wallet a piece of paper with the following written upon it. Dear Lord, lest I continue to, in my complacent ways, help me to remember that somewhere someone died for me today. And if there be war, help me to remember to ask, am I worth dying for? And in our own daily walk, we should always remember those serving and their families and honor their service and their sacrifices in our words, hearts, and actions. And whereas the city of North Bend seeks to declare itself a Purple Heart City, and the community members and city leaders of North Bend would like to honor and remember people wounded and who have lost their lives in action and in service to our country. And now, therefore, I, Mary Miller, Mayor, and the City Council of North Bend, Washington, do hereby declare the city of North Bend to be a Purple Heart City. And we commit ourselves and our community to remembering and honoring recipients of the Purple Heart Award in our words, hearts, and actions. Thank you so much. At this time, like I said before, we've got some very wonderful people in the audience tonight, thank you so much for being here. I'd like to ring this up for a photograph with you all and have the proclamation in my hand, would you be willing? Would you like that? Ladies and gentlemen, okay, thank you, Bree, be right up.
Just point, and we'll go there.
Well, there's all sorts of lines, so.
Question.
Yes.
Since we gave you guys that flower, can we have a picture taken by the flowers?
I don't see why not. Sorry, Council.
All right.
Thank you, Heather.
You're in here too, right?
I guess I am. I'll squeeze in there. All ready here? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to take a moment to say to the audience at all, stand podium and introduce yourselves?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd love you to, we'd love to know who you are, all the more. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us here, Mayor. My name is David Waggoner, I live in Isiqua, Washington, but we have connections with, I have connections with North Bend because Rocky and I and a few others put this big rock outside, and we gave you those flags. And tomorrow, we're gonna redo whatever flag is out there because I know it's not in great shape. I am a Purple Heart recipient. The only thing I remember about the event was, I did a lot of things, somersaults in the air, mine was a booby trap in Vietnam, and I was not wounded as bad as some of my fellow veterans. And my heart goes out to what they do, but I love to be with them because they're the true heroes, not me, but I just like to be with them when that happens. And it's an honor to be here, it's an honor to visit North Bend, we got a lot of stuff going on in Isiqua, and we'll be doing a Veterans Day thing here. One of you guys tell them about that.
Thank you, Dave, very much.
Hi, I'm Mike Johnston, and I just live up the road here, 1310 La Forest Drive in North Bend. I've been here since 1975, so I am fortunate enough that I did not get a Purple Heart. I was lucky, but I certainly, um, I'm glad that the city recognized that, it's important. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I am George Townsend, I live about 200 yards outside of North Bend city limits, next to exit 32. And I'm not a Purple Heart recipient, I'm also lucky in that regard, although I do have a five-times great-grandfather who lost his life on the first day of our revolution, before the Purple Heart was actually established. And then my grandfather in World War II was the recipient of one. But as adjutant of American Legion Post 79 in Snoqualmie, we also served North Bend. And thank you very much for honoring our Purple Heart veterans with this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Butterfield, I'm the Vice Commander of Post 79 in Snoqualmie, and like the other two gentlemen, I also am not a Purple Heart recipient, thankfully. But I did have an opportunity to serve my country, and I'm very proud of that time that I served, and it gave me the experiences necessary for the ultimate career that I ended up pursuing, which was a firefighter here in this town for almost 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're certainly grateful for all the efforts, all who served, lost their lives and came home, or didn't come home. We are grateful, so I'm glad, I'm glad we're going forward this way, so. Okay, so moving on, we are going to go to Commissioning Committee reports. So, let's see, Brendan, would you like to take it away for CED, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. We met this afternoon in the City Hall Adjournment Room, that room over there, at 4:00, and we had a few items. One, we discussed NBC, NBMC, North Bend Municipal Code 18.06 and 18.10, had to pertain to zoning and definition amendments, which will be coming forward to us in November 4th. We also had an update of some docket submissions, as well as an update on North Bend Housing and 230 Main Project, and James gave us a wonderful slide deck for us to read on the activity report. Our next meeting is November 18th, again, to my left in the adjournment room. Thank you, Your Honor.
Brendan, wait, don't go anywhere because you're gonna do the special work study on the 14th of October, please.
Okay, yes, we held a special work study, a budget work study, very, very in-depth. Thank you, Mr. Shaw, for all the work that you've done on that. And we also discussed human, human community service grant requests, again, in the adjournment hall to my left, sorry, I'm gonna make a shtick out of it, right? And that was October 14th, and I don't, I can't recall on our next work study, I think it's next week at 7:00 in that room to my left. Thank you, Your Honor.
Touche. Finance and Administration, Alan Gottheuf, please.
Thank you. Finance Administration Committee also met October 14th in the adjournment room at 4:00. As probably everybody knows, it's that time of the year for finances, so the first thing we discussed was the City Hall Annex Lease, and leasing, extending the lease for the Washington State Department Fish and Wildlife, and they will be sharing that with the King County Sheriff Offices, and that will be coming before this council on October 21st. As we got into our, one of the items tonight that's on the agenda, we discussed the property tax levity, and we'll discuss that tonight. This is just a public hearing, and it will be, at the next meeting, it will be approved one way or another. We discussed the Washington State Auditor check-in and where we're at with that. We got a preview of part of what was gonna come across the work today, which was third-quarter financial status report. We also discussed the General Funds Fiscal Sustainability Analysis, Part Two, revenues, and it will come before the full work study on October 28th. We also discussed the mid-biennium review, and that was presented that evening at the full council work study on the 14th. That's all we have for the Finance and Administration.
Okay, well, Eastside Fire and Rescue, can you hit us up for that?
I can do that, let me get to where it was. Okay, so, Eastside Fire and Rescue, we had a special recognition of retirement, Battalion Chief, Chief Glenn Huffman retired, and so we had a special recognition from him. And also, we sworn a new officer, Deputy Chief of Special Operations EMS and Training, Kara Putman, was sworn in and got her oath of office. Most of the agenda was basically just talking about the Fire Chief Ad-Hoc Committee, where we're trying to finish the contract for the new fire chief and hope to have that ready for our next meeting, and then discussing a little bit about what Long-Term Policy Committee is putting together. One of the items that they're putting together is how we can finance the new apparatus we need and the ability for District 10 to go out and bond for that, and then Eastside Fire and Rescue will make the payments to us, that's something we've been working on. There was a staff report on the mid-by-budget presentation, the good news is there will be no additional revenue or money needed for the next year as we get through the second half of the biennium. The next part of that was the chief's presentation, so basically, we talked about the chief's transition process, and it, and the last day of the current chief's plan day will be 11/24, so that will be his last day. We also discussed the Deputy Director Administrative Recruitment, the application window closed on September 30th, we received 36 applications. The first review took place on Monday, seven applicants were selected and moved forward, they were interviewed on 10/16, a final interview was done today. Final selection will be made shortly, and selected candidate will go through a new, the hire onboard process. KF, Kings County Fire District 10 and EFOR financing update, I kind of reviewed that, the staffs have talked with Pacific Law and Municipal Assessment Management to finalize the necessary documents to advance the partnership of department purchasing critical asset needs. And in addition, EFOR will be partnering with the City of Mercer Island to establish a fire apparatus purchase agreement that use fire that does not include a price escalation language. Most of the contracts that have been going through have a fairly big price escalation, where from the time that you buy it and they deliver it, they can increase price, so we've been able to move. There are several moving parts related to the ultimate goal of ordering the apparatus, and we hope to have a plan approved for the November Board meeting. We also discussed the involvement in Salmon Days, and then Eastside Fire and Rescue firefighter interviews were underway and were scheduled for October 6th to 10th. Screening accommodated up to 480 candidates on an evening, was added to add more oral boards will include 84 candidates with seven from spring hiring list, offered the opportunity to advance directly to the past final ride. Leadership interviews were expected to include approximately 30 candidates to establish hiring eligibility, and that was going on yesterday at the, at the facility, the main facility in Isiqua. We've been awarded a new federal grants that strengthens both the agency capabilities and regional partnerships through the DOT's Pipeline Emergency Response Grant, Eastside Fire and Rescue requested 237K and was awarded $139,013 in funding. EFOR is the lead agency with Williams Pipeline, Olympic Pipeline, PSC, King County, LEPC and Zone 1 hazmat partner agreements. The funding covers upgrading detection and monitoring capabilities, improving the pipeline incidents and readiness, enhancing the coordination with the utility and zone of hazmat. As you might not know, we have some pipelines that run through our service area, and it's really key to make sure that we're ready for that. In addition, Bellevue in partnership with Eastside Fire and Rescue, Kirkland, Shoreline, and Bothell have been awarded a FEMA grant of $420,000. The Ward Fund Session for Peer Support and Mental Training, reaching out to 120 firefighters across the partner agencies, with 90% of the costs covered, Eastside Fire and Rescue's share of the required matching was $7,650. The training provides comprehensive education and backfill coverage, minimizes operational disruptions, and builds sustainable peer support network for firefighter behavioral, fire, that, can't speak, behavioral health. We are waiting for another grant to come through for the Knox Box Modernization Project, and we got an update on the fee update that we agreed to a couple of months ago, and we're hoping that, we believe Isiqua approved it on October 7th, and we're hoping tonight at the City Council, the Council, they will approve the same update that we did. And that is the lion's share of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gottheuf. Councilmember Rustic, Public Health and Safety, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The October 7th Public Health and Safety Committee was canceled, so our next one will be early November.
Fantastic, okay, Councilmember Cullen, Transportation and Public Works, please.
Transportation and Public Works, last met on September 23rd at 4:00 PM in our council chambers. We had seven items on our agenda. We discussed the monthly update, number four, on the Meadowbrook Sewer Ulid. We also discussed the resolution approving closeout of design-build contract with DAS for the wastewater treatment plant, HPI Phase 2 project. Third on the item, we talked, there was a resolution authorizing acceptance of additional grant funds for the railroad crossing improvements project. Number four on the item, resolution approving agreement, number two, between City and Northwest Train Museum for Railroad Crossings Capital Project. Number five, resolution ratifying and confirming acceptance of the Washington State Department of Health Grant Award related to water right mitigation. Number six, discussion on ordinance adopting North Bend Municipal Code Section 6.12.035 relating to cleanup of horses, ponies, burrows, and mules. Number seven, update TPW for property owner petition for the Gardner Creek Box, Culvert, and 8th Street improvements, storm drainage and transportation, and we next meet on October 28th at 4:00 PM in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mayor Protem, Mr. Jocelyn, special work study, I think it was September 23rd, in fact, I know it was.
I believe that that was covered. I'm happy to step into the regional report on the Public Issues Committee of the Sound Cities Association.
Go right ahead.
It was a virtual meeting held on October 8th, it's the first Wednesday of each month. Items that were discussed include Sound Cities Association Regional Boards and Committees for 2026, appointments, the window for applying for those positions. Sound Cities Association appoints sitting council and electeds to over 25 boards and committees, and those are great opportunities. There's already three folks here who are currently participating, and the others, a view I will reach out to confirm or not if there's interest. It was discussed again, the Indigenous and Defense caseload standards, the Sound Cities Association has drafted a letter which, with the intent of sending that on up the legislative chain to the state to request, of course, that it's seen as a large financial burden for organizations such as our own. There was a wonderful presentation from King County for a culture program on doors open and the availability of funding for nonprofits across our region. I've discussed that with the city administrator, and the city is aware of those opportunities and will continue to engage. And yeah, then we touched on regional boards and committees, upcoming issues. And that concludes my report, the pick will meet the first Wednesday of November, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. We'll move on to more regional committee reports, anybody have anything for us? Councilmember Torgerson.
I have two.
Fantastic.
All right, so first start with SCA, King County Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee Report. We met on September 25th, and the meeting focused on the regional preparation for 2026 FIFA World Cup, which will bring six matches or more than 750,000 visitors to the Seattle area between June 11th and July 19th. We had three presenters, one was Hetty, who is a senior VP of the Seattle FIFA Local Organizing Committee, they're not from FIFA, but they're a local organizing committee, and they outlined the event's scope and economic impact, nearly 929 million statewide, that's the impact that we'll receive from FIFA coming next year, and emphasized that, that her organization is a nonprofit coordinating safety, hospitality, and community engagement. A major priority is preventing human trafficking with trained planned, training plan for thousands of local businesses, event workers, and hotel staff, and partnerships with other groups to create lasting survivor-centered practices. So, that's a huge thing, human trafficking, that was talked about a lot in some other meetings as well. Then our second speaker was, her name was Daye, and she's from King County's Equity and Social Justice Director. She described the county's anti-trafficking coalition of 80 organizations, their efforts focused on inclusive, survivor-led messaging, improved housing options for victims, and multilingual outreach through taxis, healthcare providers, and community partners. And then, last but not least, was the Chief Jeffrey Flohr, he's from King County Sheriff's Office, and he detailed the public safety planning. Law enforcement coordination will involve local, state, and federal partners through a unified command near the stadium and a secondary coordination near Renton. Planning covers airports, transit systems, and regional watch parties, supported by specialized resources such as bomb squads, helicopters, and rapid response teams. It was asked how smaller cities like North Bend can prepare for expected tourism spillover, and they, Hetty, from the local FIFA group, invited the state of North Bend to host a community roadshow with them, and they could give us a playbook on how to engage with businesses and promote local events. And then, Daye, she had encouraged local training on trafficking awareness as well, and our next meeting will be on December 11th. And then, I have a report for the Snow Valley Chamber of Commerce, regional. So, there's lots happening with the chamber, and it's a lot of good stuff. The chamber is gearing up for Small Business Saturday on November 29th, encouraging everyone to shop local and support our neighborhood businesses. This year, Mount Sinai High School students are once again creating handmade ornaments, which the chamber will hide at local shops throughout the town. If you find one, you get to keep it, it's a fun way to celebrate and explore our community. Week of giving continues, Artist Sunday is on November 30th, it is showcasing local creatives, and Giving Tuesday on December 2nd is highlighting nonprofits that serve the valley. The chamber is also hoping to once again receive a city proclamation in support of Small Business Week as a show of unity for our local entrepreneurs. Looking ahead, the chamber will launch its new Candidate 101 Academy on January 10th. This program will equip aspiring candidates with practical tools and a solid understanding of civic leadership, an exciting step towards deeper community engagement. And the course will include Understanding Robert's Rules of Order to help participants navigate meetings and various other classes. Another exciting highlight is the upcoming launch of the Snow Valley Coffee Trail Map and Passport, which will be featured in upcoming segments by Seattle Refined and Cairo. Showcasing more than 30 local coffee houses across the valley, the program encourages visitors to explore, hike, and enjoy all that our community has to offer, helping to boost tourism and inspire people to shop, sip, and adventure locally. I'm kind of excited about that one. Hot news, legislative impacts. On a more serious note, the chamber is currently in discussion with the Department of Revenue regarding In-Growth Substitute Senate Bill 5814. If you haven't heard about this yet, it's important. This new legislation now requires nonprofits to pay sales tax on live events, including things like luncheons at our senior center. Seniors can barely afford lunch as it is, and now they're gonna have to pay tax. For many of our small nonprofits, this adds a significant administrative and financial burden. If you've ever filed a detailed revenue report for business, you know how time-consuming this can be. For organizations already struggling to stay afloat in this economy, this would be a breaking point for some of them. The chamber will be discussing this topic further at tomorrow's luncheon, for those interested in learning more, and the chamber is producing an informative webinar. And the chamber is producing an informative webinar on this topic, which will be released soon. Tourism and Economic Development. The chamber is also continuing to strengthen local tourism and economic development initiatives through the launch of the Valleywide Itinerary Project. This is really cool. The program will feature curated half-day, full-day, weekday, and multi-day travel itineraries, all available online to showcase local attractions and experiences. The marketing effort incorporates advanced SEO strategies specifically designed to ensure the content is easily recognized and promoted by AI-driven search tools, helping boost online visibility, increase web traffic, and attract more visitors to explore and stay longer in North Bend and the greater Snoqualmie Valley. I'm kind of excited about that one. We've already seen some great results as far as marketing. The Snoqualmie Valley recently received international media coverage from outlets like the Daily Mirror in the UK, Sydney Herald in Australia, and American Trails Magazine in Sweden, all spotlighting our region as a premier outdoor and cultural destination. On November 15th, the chamber will release a biking and hiking guide to promote year-round outdoor recreation and tourism, keeping our area vibrant in the winter months. The third edition of the Snow Valley Wedding Guide is also in production. With more than 430 weddings annually in the valley, this sector alone contributes an estimated 10.2 million in local economic impact. Our partnership with both, or in partnership with both North Bend and Snoqualmie cities, the chamber is working to establish a Destination Marketing and Management Organization, DMO, to promote the valley as a unified visitor designation. Now, I have a question for you. Have you noticed how many new wellness businesses have been opening in North Bend? Many are closely connected to our growing outdoor recreation community. The chamber has noticed this. By January 5th, it will launch a wellness digital directory featuring local health and wellness providers, from physical therapists, chiropractors, to massage therapists and fitness centers, and mental health professionals. The goal is to make it easier for both visitors and residents to find local services, whether they're recovering from a ski trip injury or simply focusing on their overall well-being. In summary, the Snoqualmie Valley Chamber continues to be a powerful partner in supporting our small businesses, driving tourism, and strengthening community connections throughout the valley. This concludes my Snow Valley Chamber of Commerce Regional Report.
Thank you, Councilmember Torgason. Now to staff, James Henderson, let's see, Planning, Parks, and Economic Development Commission. Please provide the report. Thank you so much.
Good to see you all, Mayor and councilmembers. Thanks so much. The Planning Commission met on October 1st and reviewed amendments to the city's signed regulation, focusing on signed prohibitions and signed regulation exemptions. No recommendation was made, and the Planning Commission review of the signed regulations will continue in November. The Planning Commission next meets on November 5th and will hold a public hearing and possibly make their recommendation on a disposition and development agreement with Related Northwest for the 230 Main Affordable Housing Project. The Parks Commission met on September 24th to discuss further scoping for a wayfinding signage program focused on bicycle and pedestrian routes, and the potential for a pop-up dog park at the Dogren Family Park. The Parks Commission will next meet on November 20th and will review the draft 2025 Annual Parks Commission Report to the City Council and the draft 2026 Parks Commission Work Plan, which will be presented to City Council in January. The North Bend Economic Development Commission held a joint meeting with Snoqualmie Economic Development Commission on September 17th. Commissioners discussed how each city could foster and support the creative arts and opportunities to market North Bend and Snoqualmie for the World Cup in 2026. The North Bend Economic Development Commission will meet actually this Thursday, on October 23rd, to discuss the results of the Sign Code Survey, next steps for the bike mobility plan, and the 230 Main Affordable Housing Project. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Henderson. Moving on to the main agenda, item number seven, AB 25-111, Public Hearing Ordinance Vacating a Portion of Right-of-Way Along Northwest Eighth Street. Mr. Moore, would you please provide this staff report for us tonight? And thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. On September 16th, 2025, City Council approved Resolution 2164, setting a public hearing date of today, October 21st, 2025, to consider vacating a portion of public right-of-way that intersects Northwest Eighth Street, just west of the entrance to Nintendo off Northwest Eighth Street. If you look on page 59 of the packet, you'll see the exact location of that right-of-way. It's a long, narrow stretch of right-of-way totaling about 22,000 square feet. No utilities, narrow gravel driveway is what's there. Right-of-way vacation request was sent to the city by letter dated January 28th, 2025. Please note that the agenda bill date is January 28th, 2005, which is incorrect. That will be updated. This letter is provided on page 61 of the packet. City staff have informed, have been informed that following the pending City Council approval of the right-of-way vacation and payment of the $88,000 to the city, the Panatoni Development Company intends to purchase this site from the current property owners. Vacating public right-of-way is a two-step process. First, the city advertised and held public hearing on the proposed right-of-way vacation. We allowed public to comment, and then we announced that the city is considering vacating the right-of-way. The second step applicable tonight is, if authorized by City Council, would be to adopt the ordinance vacating the right-of-way and collecting full appraised value as compensation. City staff recommend vacating this right-of-way because it does not provide any public benefit. Further compensation in considering, consideration of the right-of-way vacation in the amount of $88,000 would allow the city to fund and build needed utilities in the nearby area. Happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any clarifying questions from council? Councilmember Rustic?
Thank you, Your Honor. So looking at the map that was included in the packet, this proposed usage is for three buildings, three warehouse-type buildings. Can you talk a little bit about both the infrastructure to support that space and the traffic that could be potentially driven to the, what is it, Northeast Eighth? Northwest Eighth Street through town?
Yeah. So Water and Sewer is currently installed out there as part of Ulid Number Seven to that project. So that takes care of Water and Sewer. Frontage improvements may go with the developer as part of their project when they go through. There's also a pending Ulid, Street Ulid, that may put in that, those improvements for them. That's still pending. I'm kind of looking into that here in the next couple of weeks. And then as far as traffic goes, we don't know who the end user is for those three buildings. They are substantial buildings. I think they're all about 100,000 square feet apiece. Don't know who the end user is, but yes, I mean, it's, I mean, we're going to see truck traffic there, but we're looking into that as we review the development as it comes through, so.
You certainly may.
So when you say, just to follow on to that, when you say we'll look into that when it comes, what does that process look like? Would we tell the developer that they can't build those warehouses? Or would we make more modifications that the city would have to pay for as a result?
No, I don't. They're going through the clearing and grading and kind of utilities review process right now. At this point in time, there's nothing that's going to point us to tell them they can't put those buildings in. As they, as the end user comes, we'll, we'll kind of review the traffic impacts there. And there may be more traffic impact fees we collect from that. We're kind of collecting a baseline traffic impact fee right now, based on what's, what's being built. And then, since we don't know who the end user is, that end user may pick up those traffic impact fees, so we collect more traffic impact fees at the end. And we would then use that money to do any traffic improvements that we may need to do out there.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions from council? Thank you. No? Okay, we'll now move on to the public hearing. The public hearing on the ordinance vacating a portion of right-of-way along Northwest Eighth Street is now open. If any members of the audience would like to comment during the public hearing, we would invite you to come to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we'll take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak, for the record. Anybody? Hi, Walt Ward, welcome.
My name is Ward Bettis, 225 Sydney Avenue South in North Bend, and I am here representing the tenant family, the owners of the property that surrounds the right-of-way. I am requesting that the council approve the vacation of the right-of-way. That's it.
Short and sweet. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Anybody online? Phil?
Nobody's registered tonight.
Nobody? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, I'm gonna, let's see. I guess we're gonna give it just a moment. I will now close the public hearing on ordinance vacating a portion of the right-of-way along Northwest Eighth Street. Councilmember Cullen, will you please make the motion?
Sorry, was not prepared for that.
You're fine.
Is this AB 25-1112?
Eleven one eleven.
Eleven one. Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve AB 25-111, an ordinance vacating a portion of public right-of-way that intersects Northwest Eighth Street, located east of parcel number 0823089001 and west of parcel number 0923089027, as a first and final reading.
Do I have a second? Second? Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Cullen and second by Councilmember Torgason. Councilmember Cullen, do you have a comment to make to your motion?
It is land that we are not using, land that we will not use, and it just makes sense to sell it and get $88,000.
Thank you. Councilmember Torgason, do you wish to comment to the motion? Ditto what she said. Any other council wish to speak? Okay, Councilmember Elwood?
Unless we can put tiny homes and more affordable housing on that property, I support the vacation of it.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Rustic?
Thank you, Mr. Elwood. That's exactly, so I will not be supporting this. I do support the need for additional businesses, but I have a very big concern about the impacts to the surrounding area. And yes, I would agree, there's such a need for other uses, such as affordable housing, that I don't see the need for us to add truck traffic into town as a result of these warehouses. Thank you.
Anybody else in this? Okay, the motion before us is to approve AB 25-111, an ordinance vacating a portion of public right-of-way that intersects Northwest Eighth Street, located east of parcel number 0823089001 and west of parcel number 0923089027, as a first and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes five to two. And thank you so much. Okay, item number eight, AB 25-112, public hearing ordinance setting 2026 property tax levy. Mr. Shaw, would you be kind enough to give us the staff report tonight? Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Martin Shaw, Finance Director. AB 25112 establishes the 2026 property tax levy for the city. For the listening audience, the city is required to annually adopt an ordinance establishing property taxes for the following year. This ordinance would establish the property tax levy for, for 2026 in two parts. The first part is a regular levy worth $2,601,201. That includes a 1% increase as allowed under state law. And the second part of the property tax levy includes an excess levy for the 2011 fire station bonds that were issued for the construction of the fire station down the street here. And the 2026 debt service for these bonds is worth 148,750. This item was reviewed by the FNA Committee on October 14th with due pass recommendation with the 1% increase. For the listening public, how property taxes work, in across the nation, there are two methods for establishing property taxes. There is a rate-based method, and there's a budget-based method. And Washington State uses the budget-based method. And under the budget-based method, there are three components to establishing the property tax assessment. The first part is the 2026 levy amount, which I just went over. The second portion is the 2026 assessed valuation for the city. And this is a preliminary number from the King County Assessor. At this point, it's worth 3.451 billion. This is a citywide levy. And dividing those two components together comes up with the levy rate. And that levy rate then is applied to the valuation for any individual property in the city to determine the property tax assessment. Using a $1 million home as an example, the 2026 property tax levy, again inclusive of the two components, is worth 80 cents per thousand. And against a $1 million home, that equates to about $800 in 2026. And this is just for the city portion of the, of the property taxes. The policy decision before the council is to approve the ordinance either with or without the 1% increase. Again, the FNA Committee recommended due pass with a 1% increase. If this council chooses to approve the ordinance without a 1% increase, that portion is worth $7.25 for the year 2026. And for the listening public, the estimated property tax bill for 2026 is worth about $9,200. This includes several components, as you can see here, state, county, the city, and several smaller districts. The city share is worth just under 9% of the total billing. And again, the overall bill is worth about $800, of which $7 of that is for the 1% increase. This concludes my presentation. The motion before you is to, is to approve AB 25112 and continue this as a public hearing until November 18th, at which time we'll be seeking an adoption of this ordinance. And then, once the ordinance is adopted, we will file the ordinance with the King County Assessor.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Council, do you have any clarifying questions? Errol?
Do you know what this council has done over the last couple of years with regards to this adoption?
Last year, this council adopted with the 1% increase.
Any other clarifying questions? Mr. Shaw? Councilmember Torgason?
On here, it says excess levy, fire station bonds. Is that part of that, or is that a separate entity? Is that part of this ordinance? Or I was, I was thinking this ordinance was just the regular levy.
Councilwoman Torgason, this ordinance includes two parts of the levy. One is for the regular operating levy, proceeds of which is used to fund general city operations. And then the second part is the city's Porsche, is the city's responsibility for the debt service for the fire station, for the fire station bonds, excuse me. So this ordinance would include both parts.
I'm wondering, can I do a follow-up question?
Yeah, you certainly can.
I'm wondering if we should have those split out, because they're two separate things. Because every year, we've always just done the one levy by itself, and I don't think we've done the fire levy with it. I don't recall that last year.
If I can answer that, the ordinance in previous years has included both parts. On page 69 of your packet, this is the ordinance adopting the 26 levy with the 1% increase. Section one establishes the regular levy, Councilwoman, and then section number two establishes the voter-approved portion or the excess levy for the fire station bonds.
Another follow-up question?
One more, please.
And so, okay, so the section two is the voter-approved levy, and so they already approved that, and we're just kind of, are we just reconfirming it? Is that what this is saying?
What it's saying is we're informing the King County Assessor what the 2026 debt service payment figure is, and the assessor then uses that. And the assessor then uses that figure to determine the, uh, levy rate.
Yes, thank you. That makes, I, I understand now. Thank you. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protan, Joss.
I just, I wanted to clarify the action we're taking here this evening. As I read it, the motion that we're, that will come before us is to keep the public hearing open until the November eighteenth meeting, at which point it might be appropriate to comment on one's opinion as a council member as to the one percent or not, and, and what action to take going forward. Essentially, we will be having this action come before us in the form of an agenda bill, but that's not tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Gossaf.
Yeah, I just want to make clarification, because I, I think there's a misunderstanding. I think at the Finance Committee, we approved it to go to the open for public. I don't believe we made a recommendation as to whether you take the one percent or anything. So I, I just wanted to clarify that. Do my fellow finance, uh, members recall the same conversation? So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, did I miss anybody else? No? Okay, we will now move on to the public hearing. Uh, the public hearing on ordinance setting the night, uh, two thousand twenty-six property tax levy is now open. If any members of the audience would like to comment, uh, during the public hearing, we would invite you to come to the podium at this time. Um, if you have requested accommodation, the city clerk can wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and, uh, you have three minutes to speak for the record. Seeing anybody? Phil, do we have anyone online?
Not tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. Okay, um. Councilmember Gottelf, will you please make the motion?
Thank you. Motion to approve AB twenty-five-one-one-two, continuing the public hearing on ordinance setting the twenty-twenty-six property tax levy until the November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting.
And do we have a second? Okay, thank you very much. We have, uh, a motion made by Councilmember Gottelf and seconded by, uh, Mr. Elwood. Um, Mr. Gottelf, would you like to comment to your motion?
Well, this is a standard operating procedure and, and part of our business moving forward. Uh, and we've always done this to give some time, um, and any discussion about where the council members feel about this will be discussed on November eighth, as our Mayor Protan pointed out.
Excellent. Um, Councilmember Elwood, do you have any comments to make? Okay, anybody else on council wish to comment? No? Okay, the motion before us is to approve AB twenty-five dash one-one-two, continuing the public hearing on an ordinance setting the twenty-twenty-six property tax levy until November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Uh, moving on to item number nine, AB twenty-five dash one-one-three, ordinance amending NBMC ten dot twenty dot zero-five-zero, and thank you so much for the light, and adopting NBMC ten dot twenty dot zero-five-zero regarding motorized foot scooters. Mr. Henderson, look to you again to provide the staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, the item before council is an ordinance regulating the operations and use of e-scooters. The ordinance would amend, uh, North Bend Municipal Code ten dot twenty dot twenty, general requirements and operations, and add section ten dot twenty dot oh-five, impoundments and penalties. North Bend has seen a significant increase in e-scooters on sidewalks and parks. E-scooters, if not operated in a safe and responsible way, represent a potential safety hazard to their riders, but also pedestrians and drivers. The proposed, proposed ordinance would lower the lawful age to operate a motorized scooter from sixteen years to twelve years, reduce the lawful speed from twenty-five miles per hour to fifteen miles per hour, allow the use of motorized foot scooters on sidewalks and public trails within the city of North Bend to enhance safety of riders as well as the general public, and provide for impoundment and penalties if a motorized foot scooter is operated in a manner that violates the provisions of NBMC Chapter ten dot twenty. Chapter ten dot twenty currently requires helmets to operate a motorized foot scooter and makes it unlawful to operate a motorized foot scooter while carrying a passenger. Uh, this item was discussed at the September twenty-three work study. Uh, the following alternatives are available to city council. Approve the ordinance as presented, or remand the ordinance to a future city council session and provide additional feedback and guidance so staff can draft an alternative ordinance. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Henderson. Council, do you have any clarifying questions? Okay, Councilmember Elwood.
So, and, and I apologize, I should have radioed this in ahead of time, but do we have any stats on any sort of, um, wrecks or conflicts with motorized scooters in North Bend? I'm just curious if there are any numbers, and if not, that's fine. I didn't mean to surprise you with that question.
He's looking it up right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have it in my fingertips, but I'll see if the, the chief has some.
I, I don't recall that there was any mentioned at the work study, but I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
Thank you, the interim chief. Thank you very much.
Again, Chief, I'm really sorry. My walkie-talkie was broken this morning.
We should have the Jeopardy music playing in the background right now.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, interim chief Horace, uh, to answer your question, at this time, I don't see anything specific over the last, you know, the recent history. I can't have my staff do a deeper dive into it, because it's, I looked up accidents, um, but I didn't see anything specific to a scooter. I do not recall getting any feedback from any of my staff on particularly the scooters. It's been more along the lines of, of the e-motocycles and things like that involving people.
Okay, and within North Bend?
In both cities, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any other clarifying questions? Uh, councilmember, I guess, there you go.
Um, so I'm just reading it, because on the agenda, on the summary of the agenda bill, it says we're reducing the lawful speed from twenty-five miles an hour to fifteen. But then, in the text, just to be clear, if it's in the bike lane, they, it can remain at twenty-five miles an hour under point D operation of the speed limit in XF, uh, unless operated within a bicycle lane?
I read that differently.
Okay.
I think the intent is to say the only time you can ride on a street is if it's in a bike lane with a speed limit up to twenty-five miles an hour, but you can still only go fifteen. I believe that's the intent, not that, oh, in that situation on your scooter, you, you're permitted to go twenty-five miles an hour.
Okay. Just to be, is that right? Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else in council with any clarifying questions? No? Okay, Councilmember Rustic, will you please make the motion?
Yes, thank you. Um, so motion to approve AB twenty-five dash one-one-three, an ordinance relating to motorized foot scooters, amending the NBMC ten twenty dash oh-two-zero, general requirements and operation, and adopting a new NBMC Section ten dash twenty dash oh-five-oh, impoundment and penalties as a first and final reading.
Second.
Thank you, uh, thank you for the motion, Councilmember Rustic, and seconded by Councilmember Gottelf. Councilman Rustic, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think we, we discussed this in the past. We, we are looking to try and make this, uh, safer for our residents, and I am glad to hear that there haven't been any significant, uh, injuries as a result. Um, but we have certainly seen over the course of the last number of months, um, unsafe, uh, riding of these scooters. And, you know, putting a little bit more definition as to what is allowed and not allowed is a positive thing. Um, I know a lot of cities are struggling with this as well, and, uh, uh, some of the risk isn't just those that are on the scooters. It's also the risk to, uh, pedestrians or vehicles that are in the vicinity. So I feel like taking a step forward is, is the right course of action to try and help this. Um, I would encourage my council colleagues that if there is a portion of this, uh, ordinance that we can find a compromise on, I think that's, um, that's worthy of discussion. But, uh, doing nothing, I don't think is, uh, a viable option. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rustic. Councilmember Gottelf, do you have any comments to make?
Yeah, I do. Um, I do understand my fellow council members' concerns of trying to regulate something that they may think is not an issue at this point in time. But I want to point out a couple of things on here. Um, we're changing the lawful age, and I know there's some concern from sixteen to twelve, more for the reason that it's realistic. That is, and even younger, these kids are out there. So to turn around and say, they, you know, parents are buying them, that they can't, you know, ride these scooters, to me, is, is ludicrous. So at a minimum, that to me is something that we need to fix moving forward. The other part of it was safety for a bunch of these kids. A bunch of these kids, and I see them in my neighborhoods, and I'm sure you all have, they're riding it on the streets because they're not supposed to ride them on the sidewalks. And I have seen a lot of unsafe, where parents will come out of the driveway not thinking to look for a scooter. I mean, we most try to look for bicycles and everything else, but seeing a scooter, you don't always see it. It's low to the ground. It, it may even, you know, sometimes it just isn't out of your eye. And to have these kids be able to ride them on the sidewalk, to me, is extremely important. I also think it's important for us to do something before there is a problem. Um, and I, and, and I will be disappointed, I understand my council members, if this does not pass in some way, shape, or form, because I think we are missing a point in public safety to set a precedent and at least set things that are right for this community, um, on at least two of these things. And I agree, if there are certain items on here that you don't want to see moving forward, let's get them out. But to not pass this and just, you know, let it die here, um, I think is not the right solution. As somebody who has spent majority of their time on council, focused on public safety, um, I really think it's important, um, that we, we do something, at least on two of those items, uh, on here, um, moving forward, to at least allow kids at twelve years old not to be, you know, penalized on it, and that we do allow them to ride on sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other council wish to comment? I think that's Torgerson, uh, Councilmember Torgerson first, and followed by Councilmember Elwood. Uh, take it away.
One of the concerns, I've had a lot of people in the community talk to me about, uh, having the age be moved from sixteen to twelve. Um, most entities around the United States, the age is sixteen, so it's, it's any, it's, it's not like the, um, the norm of going to twelve. Um, and, uh, there's concerns out there for safety as, as we, as regards to that. So I wanted to make a motion to amend Section ten dot twenty dot zero twenty A to revert to, back to the original age restriction of sixteen.
Okay, do we have a second? Second. Okay. Uh, motion made by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember, um, Colon. Thank you very much. Any further comment? Okay, uh, Brendan.
Well, point of order?
Yep.
Are we to be discussing this amendment now?
We are.
Original?
Correct. Yep. Yes, correct. Amendment's on the floor. Yeah.
Thank you. That's, I just clarified. Um, I actually, uh, am supportive of reducing the age to twelve. And, and just to make it clear, we already have an ordinance in place about scooters. It's not like we're inventing it net new. We're amending something that's already in place. Um, so I, I do agree that twelve years is a, is a fine age, and I also agree with the sidewalk, uh, component of it, where I have a little bit of contention is reducing the speed, um, in the, uh, speed limit from tw, in the speed, in the speed limit zone, public with a speed limit zone of twenty-five miles an hour to fifteen miles. Now, that's a little bit my, my hangup, but I don't support, uh, I support keeping it to twelve, the reduction. So I won't be voting in favor of the amendment.
Okay, thank you, Brendan. Um, anybody else? Councilmember Gottelf, unless any, unless you have to make any comments before you get to Mark.
That right, Tim, I don't know what data is, is available. I experienced kids on scooters. I've been a parent. Uh, I think it is perhaps insightful that, and I don't mean to, of course, presage anything, that, you know, so far, uh, we've managed to not, in this town, uh, suffer something tragic as a result of how kids are behaving. Um, but boy, we have to strike a balance, and, and I don't know, as a parent, that telling your kid, you know, I'm going to be voting in favor of keeping it at twelve. Thank you.
Uh, councilmember, yes, you're welcome.
Um, yeah, I will not support the amendment. I think, um, reducing it to twelve, uh, makes a lot of sense. Um, I think, uh, I'll have a lot of heartburn with, uh, the following agenda item, and I think part of reducing this e-scooter to twelve i- is actually part of the solution. I think a lot of parents out there are hesitant to look at the e-motorcycle, e-bike, uh, for their kids, and the e-scooter is viewed as a safer alternative. Um, and, uh, I believe, uh, Councilmember Gottelf mentioned, it's happening at, uh, sooner and sooner, younger ages. Um, so I think letting parents know, uh, that this is a, we view this as a safer alternative, I think, uh, supports that. So I'd prefer to keep it as written.
Thank you, councilmember. Anybody else? I think Mr. Gottelf, yep.
Yeah, I, I won't be supporting the motion either. Again, I think you're watering it down. One of the areas that if somebody's interested in, if there's a concern with the fifteen versus twenty-five, um, I would entertain something that has variable speeds depending on where you're riding, so to speak, in order to advance this. Um, and if somebody's, if, if that's something of somebody, I would support that. But lowering it to, putting it back up to sixteen, let's be realistic. At the age of sixteen, kids are going to be right, in cars, they're not going to be riding scooters. And even going to twelve, I think we're, you know, we're, we're going to see a lot younger out there still riding it. So being realistic in this is what I think we need to do.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Elwood.
Well, I just, in response to that, yes, uh, I was going to propose something, once we get through this motion, to talk more about.
Thank you. I was going to propose something. I was going to propose something, once we get through with this amendment. To that variable speed notion.
Okay, we gone around, we're, we're ready to make a vote on this amended motion? Okay, uh, motion to amend Section ten dot two zero dot zero-two-zero A to revert to original age restriction of sixteen. Um, how do you vote, everybody? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Any ayes?
There's two ayes here.
Two ayes? Okay, I didn't catch that. Uh, nays? Any nays?
No. Aye, aye.
Okay, so that's four, five? Okay, five to two does not, it, it fails. I apologize. We're going to go back to the original motion. Um, ready to vote on that?
I would like to make an amendment.
Okay, sorry, you said that. Pardon me.
Um, I, I would like to, uh, modify Section E, where it reads, "It is unlawful for any person to operate a motorized foot scooter in excess of fifteen miles an hour." I'd like to modify that to be a sidewalk speed limit, not a right-of-way bike lane, uh, vehicular right-of-way. Does that make sense? I don't know how to articulate that. In the road, twenty-five, I'm fine with. On the sidewalk, they can go a little bit slower.
Councilmember Elwood, just to, just to summarize, so you're talking fifteen miles an hour on the sidewalk, twenty-five on, in the right-of-way bike lane?
Correct.
In the amendment, Section E?
Correct.
Okay.
With the, uh, term. Oh, yeah. Well, see, that's a problem. You had to interpret what I was saying. It should have been clear.
Would it be easier just to say, um, fifteen miles an hour on the sidewalk and in, in, you know, uh, yeah, twenty-five, or applicable to the condition?
The spirit of my motion.
Yeah, I know exactly what, I don't know how to, what the best way to phrase it.
Thank you for that clarity. Um, but real quick, I think we need a second.
You do need a second.
Second. Okay, so, um, to respond to that, a, and I, I'm open to changing it, because the spirit of what I was talking about is I travel a lot. I see a lot of adults using scooters. I see people of different types of economic, uh, status in their communities, that these are viable forms of, you know, commuting to and from work or school and so forth. Um, and I see a lot of people, I see more people responsibly using them. And so I would not like, I don't want to, uh, like, I don't want to, uh, ring that part in for responsible users on the public right-of-way. I think it's perfectly accessible or acceptable if it's, uh, the speed within the acceptable speed zone, if that makes sense. So I could make that amendment.
So, Mayor, amendment is on the floor, section E, fifteen miles an hour on a sidewalk?
Fifteen, I don't see.
Miles an hour on a sidewalk. So it's differentiating from the right-of-way to the sidewalk.
I'm lost in the transition here.
Well, I think what we want to make it clear is if they're on a bike lane, or if they're, you know, in a proper area for it, they can go to twenty-five. Right?
Yep.
Um, and I don't know if we want legal to, to give us some advice is the best term to put on it. Um, but I mean, I, I, variable speed is what I'm kind of saying, but no faster than fifteen miles on a sidewalk, which seems to be appropriate.
Which is where the restriction's coming to, is the sidewalk.
Yes.
Fifteen miles. Okay.
Oh, question.
Oh. Okay.
What is our speed limit on a public trail? Because if we're saying sidewalk, if we're saying sidewalk.
I couldn't take an answer to that. So we have separate park and trail regulations, and I believe that is, what it says is reasonable and prudent and not to exceed, and I believe it's fifteen miles per hour.
But that's the term I was looking for, reasonable and prudent. So fifteen miles an hour, uh, on the sidewalks and in other areas, that's reasonable and prudent, which means if they are on the street or on a area where they can go twenty-five, they should be able to. Um, I don't want to encourage people, kids, to be going on, driving the street, or even, but applicable pathways. I mean, because I think, I believe that you probably, on a bike lane, you could probably get your bike up to some, up to twenty-five miles an hour. So I think that's where you want to see it, but you don't want to encourage it to be on the streets, but proper bike lanes.
Your honor, if I?
Councilmember Elwood. What?
Well.
What?
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I think, Councilmember Colon.
I have the opposite take of Councilmember Elwood. I work at Harborview Medical Center as a nurse for the past twenty-four years, and of late, with the e-bikes, we see, I see three to four accidents every time I'm at work. Their faces are smashed, their brains have skull fractures, they have brain trauma, and I think twenty-five miles per hour is very risky, especially with twelve-year-olds or adults who can sometimes think, oh, I'm not drinking and driving, but I'm going to jump on my scooter. Uh, I don't like it at all.
Councilmember Elwood.
To, to clarify, Mr. McCarty, so we already have language, legal language, with respect to rate of travel on trails, on sidewalks, right?
That is correct. I'm looking at North Bend Municipal Code twelve point oh four one ninety A, and it talks about, "No person shall travel on a trail at a speed greater than reasonable and prudent under the conditions, and having regarded the actual and potential hazards, uh, than existing. In, in any event, speed shall be so controlled as may be necessary to avoid colliding with others who are complying with the law and using reasonable care. Travel at speeds in excess of fifteen miles per hour shall constitute an evidentiary presumption that the person violated this section."
Okay, so we already have?
I, I quickly, I've been given something by our, uh, city clerk that kind of, in it, it says, "It is unlawful for any person to operate a motorized scooter in excess of fifteen miles per hour," and what it says on there, and what we can do is add to "on the sidewalk." The one above it says, "Operation of motorized foot scooter on a public way with a speed limit in excess of twenty-five miles an hour unless the motorized foot scooter is operated within a bicycle lane is unlawful."
It is unlawful.
Yeah, yes, in excess, operation in, on a public way. So currently, in excess, and I'm not sure, are, are we saying they're going to get over twenty-five miles an hour on those scooters? And I think that was one of the things, we didn't want modified ones, because I think the speed limit on the scooter is twenty.
A point of order, if I may. Wasn't amendment made? Did you make, is there amendment that's been made and seconded? In the amendment before us is the language, I believe, that you just cited is the proposed amendment.
Yes.
That that section would say, section E would have appended to the end of it, the three words, "on the sidewalk."
Yes.
That's the amendment that's been proposed. So that's what we should be discussing, is whether or not we're voting for or against that proposed amendment to this, uh, agenda bill. Thank you.
All right, if, if you could pass that on to me, or where that's located here. I'm still searching it out, if you don't mind. Uh, okay.
Circle.
Perfect. E, let's wrap that one. Okay, are we ready to? Okay, I'm going to call for the motion. Yep. Okay. Uh, motion on the floor is, it is, uh, this is on section E. It is unlawful for any person to operate a motorized foot scooter in excess of fifteen miles per hour outs, up on the sidewalk, clearly. Um, yep, that's what's proposed.
That's pretty nice.
Okay, uh, what, ayes? Any ayes?
Aye.
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 Any ayes?
Nay.
Okay, well, it looks like we, it does pass, as amended there, and it's five to two.
Your honor, I have another amendment.
Okay, okay, sir. Take it away.
I'd like to amend, uh, item D, "Operation of a motorized foot scooter on a public way with a speed limit in excess of twenty-five miles an hour unless motorized foot scooter is operated within a bicycle lane." Never mind, I reject my motion, my amendment. I, I thought I saw a hole in something.
Okay, so that's, that's a no.
I'm withdrawing, I'm not finishing my amendment.
Okay. Oh, you're a lot of fun. Thank you, Brendan. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, Councilmember Torgerson.
Uh, clarification. Um, the way I'm reading D is that you can ride in a bike lane that's twenty-five miles, um, or less. And that's it. It doesn't mean that you can drive twenty-five miles an hour.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Correct.
Okay, cool.
And, if I may, your honor, that, that's the point that I was stuck on, is that it's unlawful for a scooter to be in a bike lane in a public right-of-way that's faster than twenty-five miles an hour. So we have thirty-five mile an hour here on North Bend Way. There are no bike lanes on there. There's a trail, but we've got that covered through that other language. But anywhere that is over twenty-five miles an hour, they can't ride. But if it's under twenty-five or less, they can ride in a bicycle. Is that correct? Just to add more clarity.
Sounds like it's accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have confirmation. That is, okay, Councilmember Torgerson.
Okay, so I think we need to make this clear. Um, because now we're saying they can only ride on the sidewalk. Um, but it says you can go into the, uh, on a bike lane, um, in, in excess of, that, that's a twenty-five miles or, or less bike lane. Um, but then, below that, we're saying you can only ride in the sidewalk. So it's, it's, it's kind of.
We're allowing it on scooters on the sidewalk, if we have it, and we're paying for it.
But we're being a little unclear.
Sorry.
If, it, 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 what, what we're doing is, we are allowing it on a sidewalk in this ordinance, okay, at fifteen miles an hour. In other areas, you can go up to twenty-five based on applicable laws and, or applicable, uh, you're shaking your head, so I'm not understanding. So I mean, on a bike lane, you can go twenty-five or less.
Because you're not allowed on a road that's faster than twenty-five.
Yes, that's where the, the problem is, right there, is the, it's not clear.
What was alternative B in our original motion?
So I, I feel like D needs to be a little bit more, um, clarified.
Councilperson Torgerson, did you say D?
D, yes.
Okay.
May I offer a suggestion?
Absolutely.
I think it might be more clear for it to read, "On, um, public ways with a speed limit greater than twenty-five miles per hour, it's unlawful to op- operate a motorized foot scooter except within a bicycle lane."
If I may, there's, I mean, we're stumbling, or we've now, it used to say that you couldn't go faster than fifteen miles an hour, period. And now it says you can go, you can't exceed fifteen miles an hour on a sidewalk, which leaves it unclear how fast you can go in any other situation. None of what's being proposed addresses Councilmember Torgerson's valid concern, that if, can you go twenty-five in the bike lane of a road where the posted speed limit doesn't exceed twenty-five miles an hour? The way it's currently written, I think, yes, you can.
Correct.
So I'm not clear if, if that's what council wants, is that, yes, if, in that unique situation, if the posted limit is twenty-five and there's a bike lane, you can go twenty-five. If the posted limit is thirty-five and there's a bike lane, you don't get to be on that road at all.
Yeah. No, I don't, I, I apologize, but I don't read it that way. So the, the way that D currently reads is, it says that you cannot operate a motorized foot scooter on a public way with a speed limit in excess of twenty-five miles an hour and less operated within a bicycle lane. So you could ride on a speed limit thirty-five miles per hour if you're in a bike lane.
Wait, the, the words there, Mr. McCarty, are, "is unlawful." That's kind of, I think, what's throwing things up here. Because what you just said is how I was reading it, but then you read, "is unlawful," then I'm reading it, okay, well, you can't be in a road that's twenty-five miles an hour or more. It doesn't.
And if I may, none of which makes it clear whether or not we'd expect the rider to go fifteen, twenty-five, or thirty-five, if that's what's posted in my reading. So it is a little fuzzy.
If we may offer, our city attorney is going to offer some language, and we can consider.
Be wonderful. Thank you very much.
The possible language would be, "It is unlawful for any person to operate a motorized foot scooter on a public roadway that has a speed limit exceeding twenty-five miles per hour, except that motorized foot scooters may be operated within designated bicycle lanes."
Very nice.
Going how fast?
They can't exceed the speed limit.
And not exceed the speed limit, I mean, that cover, that's, I mean.
It, it would be implied in, in the sense of them, uh, if they were operating within the roadway, being considered, uh, a vehicle. I, I have not double-checked on that, I suppose, but I think that, yeah, our chief is, is nodding in approval, so we'll go with that.
We need to, either by the city clerk or the mayor to be able to move it, what, the chair?
Actually, I can make the motion to modify to the legal, the new legal language for section D. So I, I move to amend the ordinance as written by our legal counsel for section D.
And I second it again.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
So if the speed limit is fifty miles per hour, and they can soup up their scooter to go fifty miles per hour in the bike lane, will that be legal?
Well, I thought, I thought, did your language say something about? I thought it said something else. Would you mind rereading your amendment?
So the possible amendment was to subsection D, uh, being changed to read, "It is unlawful for any person to operate a motorized foot scooter on a public roadway that has a speed limit exceeding twenty-five miles per hour, except that motorized foot scooters may be operated within designated bicycle lanes."
I, I'm reading that to mean that a motorized foot scooter is not allowed in a, a road exceeding twenty-five miles an hour. Yep. And if you are on a public right-of-way, you have to be in a bike lane. That's the way I'm reading those words, or understanding, interpreting.
And if the speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour and there's a bike lane, you can ride your scooter at thirty-five miles an hour, the way it's presently written.
If I can offer one thing to Councilmember Colon's comment, is I don't believe we have, and maybe I'm wrong, if it's a road that's fifty, we wouldn't have a bike lane. But maybe I'm wrong on that in our area.
We plan on getting them towards the north or the east end of town eventually.
So if we.
So this ordinance would be in place when they're heading up towards Truck Town.
Mm-hmm.
They would be able to go that fast.
So when we get to that point, we would want to add language to that, if that becomes something that's applicable to our area. Yeah.
And, and I believe if we are going to do it, we're going to have to lower the speed limits down there. Right now, we've lowered the majority of it to forty, at a point that it becomes more congested, just like we have in other, I think we would, it would behoove us to lower those to forty.
Councilmember Torgerson.
Wouldn't it just be easier to, if we want the, the speed limit to be twenty-five in a bike lane in a, just say it now instead of waiting till later? Is that, is that what council is leaning towards? Max twenty-five and a twenty-five in a bike lane? Then why don't we just say it?
No more than?
Yeah.
Okay, so hold.
Right, if.
Please, Mayor.
If Colin simply adds, "At speeds not to exceed twenty-five miles an hour," at the end of what's proposed, I think that's what you've said, if the council's in agreement, I don't know. Then we're back to twenty-five miles an hour.
So what, what was proposed? I'm sorry?
No.
Not to, not to, all right, at speeds not to exceed twenty-five miles an hour, just to put back in there a blanket, you can't go faster than this statement.
Thought he already had that in there.
Only, well, sidewalks are fifteen.
Councilmember Elwood, do you, do you like us to repeat it?
I would.
With the language?
Very much appreciate that.
Before we go for a second. Okay. Why don't you repeat that?
Yeah, with the addition?
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, changing subsection D to, "It is unlawful for any person to operate a motorized foot scooter on a public roadway that has a speed limit exceeding twenty-five miles per hour, except that motorized foot scooters may be operated within designated bicycle lanes at a speed not exceeding twenty-five miles per hour."
Second it again.
That, that's, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm giving up. Uh, go ahead. Uh, so yes, that's my amendment, my, my amended amendment. We need a second on that. Thank you.
Motion being Mr., Mr. Elwood, and seconded by Mr. Gottelf. Um, do either of you wish to speak to your amended amendment? Amended.
Where do we get to the e-bikes?
That's okay. I don't think, I think you've spoken already. Okay, um, what, what's that? We're going to vote on the amendment now. Everybody ready?
Wait, do we have to vote on the amended amendment?
Amended amendment.
And then the amendment?
And then the original amendment.
Amendment didn't get a second. It was the amended.
I thought the original.
Exactly.
It did.
Yes.
So this vote will approve the amended amendment, both of them.
Section D.
Yep.
Thank you.
Section D. Okay, everybody ready?
No.
Okay, all ayes?
Yes.
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay, that's, that passes six to one. Thank you very much. That was super fun. We're going to go back to the main, main motion as amended. Oh, good Lord, here we go. Motion before us is to approve AB twenty-five dash one one three, an ordinance relating to motorized foot scooters, amending NBMC ten dot twenty dot zero two zero general requirements and operation, and adopting a new NBMC section ten dot twenty dot zero five zero impoundment and penalties, as a first and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That was one? Okay. Uh, that does pass six to one. Thank you, everybody. How entertaining. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, item number ten, AB twenty-five dash one one four, ordinance adopting NBMC chapter, I know everybody's excited, NB chapter ten dot eighteen, electric motorcycles. Mr. Henderson, I know you've been waiting a long time. Here's your time. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Great to see you again. So the item before council is an ordinance regulating the operation and use of e-motocycles. The city of North Bend has seen an increase in electric motorcycles, also known as e-motocycles, within the community. E-motocycles represent a potential safety hazard to other motor vehicle drivers and pedestrians due to their rapid acceleration and high speeds, as well as ability to travel up to fifty miles per hour. The proposed ordinance would adopt chapter ten dot eighteen into the North The proposed ordinance would adopt chapter 10 dot 18 into the North Bend municipal code. The ordinance includes a definition of an electric motorcycle as a motorcycle as defined by RCW 46 dot 04 dot 330, which is powered by an electric motor. To differentiate an e-motorcycle from an e-bike, the definition also states that e-motocycles do not have fully operated operative pedals, may have foot pegs, or have a motor with a power output that exceeds 750 watts, or have a motor that continues to power the vehicle above speeds of 28 miles per hour. Consistent with state law, the ordinance requires electric motorcycles to register with the Washington Department of Licensing and are subject to RCW provisions for off-road motorcycles. E-motocycles must display a valid license plate and may only be operated by individuals with a valid driver's license and motorcycle endorsement. In addition, the ordinance also prohibits guardians from authorizing or knowingly permitting a minor in their care to operate an e-motorcycle. Requires that e-motorcycle operators obey all traffic laws and provide that any infractions are subject to monetary penalty. Requires any person operating an electric motorcycle to wear a helmet. Compromits law enforcement officers to impound and establish penalties for any electric motorcycle operated in violation of this chapter. This item was discussed at Public Health and Safety work study and City Council meetings. The following alternatives are available to City Council. Approve the ordinance as presented. Remand the ordinance to a future City Council session and provide additional feedback and guidance to staff to draft an alternative ordinance, or postpone to a future council meeting when the King County Sheriff's Office is providing police services. I'd like to actually sort of make one change to the proposed ordinance. If you're looking at your packet on page 88, chapter 10 dot 18 dot 030, titled Helmets Required, Define B. We need to change the, basically the coding of the helmet from 16 CFR 203 to 49 CFR 57 571 dot 218. The reason for the change is that that new CFR is the definition for motorcycle helmets. So just add some clarity there. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just as a point of clarification, James, can you give us that number one more time?
Yeah, of course. So it's on page 88 of your packet. That's the ordinance. It's to section 10 dot 18 dot 030. It's titled Helmets Required, Defined, and then it's subsection B. So it's to change 16 CFR 1203 to 49 CFR 571 dot 218.
Thank you for that clarification. Council, do you have any clarifying questions for Mr. Henderson? Mr. Elwood?
Thank you. Thanks for that introduction. So as I understand it, this, the state already has an ordinance with respect to this and our ask is to adopt it into our code, even though it already exists. So the one question I have is what is, what makes adopting this redundancy make, I guess, our law enforcement officers, you know, what's the impact on that? Is, what's the, I guess I don't understand why we're passing laws on top of laws. Need clarity on that.
Yeah, great question. I'll ask the chief to maybe help me out with this one. So the current RCW 46 dot 04 dot 330 defines a motorcycle, but it doesn't necessarily include in that an electric motorcycle or thus a motorcycle propelled purely by electricity. So this would sort of use the definition of that, of a motorcycle in the RCW and add to that electric motorcycle as one being propelled by electricity. And chief?
You're answered.
Repeat again.
So yes, there are laws that dictate what a motorcycle is, what the RCWs are, and they have to follow the rules of the road. What you're doing here is ultimately being a little more confining, listing it out in the code and listing out the impounding section and providing a lot clearer direction when it comes to how we physically address the juvenile operating them or impounding the motorcycle, the said motorcycle. We're currently, what I've directed my staff to do, the officers are impounding based on the law. And one of the things that comes into play is working with the prosecutor's office on it. They are working with us or with other agents or other cities on the ordinance and kind of clarifying what an electric motorcycle is. There is definition in RCW listed out in like three different RCWs, for example. And what you're having to do is combine them all in. What we're doing here is bringing it all home, putting it in one place. Because the laws, the RCWs have not really caught up to the times. If that helps answer, you're kind of just putting it in one place.
So is Nacquami adopted this?
We, they have, I am taking, so I was in public safety two Mondays ago, just so I had public safety last week. And I'm doing a council discussion with an ordinance, very similar in form. In fact, that's one of the reasons that we, James made the adjustment to the motorcycle helmet, because it had the listed bicycle helmet, basically. And so that's one of the things that I've been working on over there. And we are doing a full council discussion and it is going forward on the agenda. Mercer Island just passed this and Issaquah is doing the same thing that Snacquami and North Bend are currently doing.
Are they passing the same ordinance?
They're very, very similar. We're using languages. There are some changes in ours versus, for instance, Issaquah. Issaquah is having the officers take the motorcycles back to their departments. During the impounding, we are not. The reason for that is as motor vehicles are supposed to be registered, titled and all of that stuff. So in order, in order for us to just, to get rid of it, if it's not picked up by the parent, I'm stuck with a motor vehicle that I don't have a title to. So we are impounding through and listed in this, we are impounding through the impound companies that we contract with.
And those impounds that you're talking about, those are all covered under existing law that's allowing you to do that?
Yes, but in the ordinance with like Issaquah, they're having them take them to the police department for the department to get rid of and collect fees and do all that. It's a motor vehicle. I can't get rid of it if it's not picked up. It's, it's a lot harder process and nor do I want to get into the business and of taking in fines and things like that when it comes to impounding.
And my final question, Your Honor, how big of a problem is this in North Bend?
Well, I can tell you. So I just.
I know I asked a month ago, whatever, so.
So I just looked at, for instance, accident injuries. And I just Googled the last, or not Googled, but I looked up the last six months. It's our version of Google.
Hopefully it's your Google.
It's my Google. And out of the last six months, I've had nine motor vehicle accidents with injury in North Bend. One of those involved a 14-year-old on one of these devices. Non-injury. And I was just scrolling through them while y'all were talking about the amendments.
I was buying you time.
You were buying me time. In the last six months, I've probably got three pages of accidents that I would have to go through and individually look to see if it involved an e-motorcycle or a bike or even a scooter. Which is why I said I can get you numbers further on the scooters. It's just going to take a little bit more research. And if I look up juvenile problems, which I did when I was back there, and almost every one I clicked on other than a couple of parties or something like that, I would say about 85% of them, and I'm being kind of conservative there, was involving a call where we were responding to look for somebody on an e-motorcycle or a juvenile on an e-motorcycle or an e-bike at a park in the roadway, popping willies, things like that.
Okay, because, thank you for that. I think what I'm hearing, my, what I'm interpreting is conflating some things, right? Like we've had one juvenile.
With an injury where, at least on the, out of the nine that I pulled up in the last six months where aid was called and it says there was injury.
And but we're unclear about e-bikes versus regular bikes, motorcycles versus regular motorcycles.
When I get, when I get into the non-injury or juvenile problems, that's going to take a little bit more research than what I have here to do. On the other ones, out of the nine, I went through and looked at each one of them. And one of those, it clearly said on a motorcycle. And he was 14 years old.
Which was not permissible by law already.
No, he was on the roadway and rear ended or hit the side of a car.
Wow. So the law didn't really stop him from breaking.
No.
Okay.
Now, but what we're doing here is we are, to kind of go back to answering your question, we're basically bringing the definitions in and kind of just cleaning up some of the problems. I was in a meeting about a month ago now with AWC, where AWC is starting to take this on to bring this to the legislature to kind of clarify it. However, 2026 is a short legislative session and they don't think they're going to get it on for that one, which is why a lot of the cities where this is a, a bigger problem and we're seeing more calls on it, they're kind of taking these steps to do this.
Thank you.
If that helps.
Thanks, interim chief. Any more clarifying questions? I got, I'm surrounded. Okay. Arrow.
So in this scenario, I guess you could use that teenager, but you have a scenario, kid riding a bike, not registered, no plates, whatever, right? Smashes into a car. You guys are called. Maybe there's an injury, maybe there isn't. You guys are currently impounding that bike. You're not keeping it like Issaquah, right? So then there's an insurance claim, no doubt, right? Like, well, or it's on the owner of the car, right? It's up there. But I guess, so maybe similar to Brennan's question. Your guys show up, you engage, right? You're handling the incident. What we're passing today, how does that engagement with that teenager and those parents change?
The enforcement changes. So this becomes a municipal enforcement. We're still going to send a case up and we still send cases up to the juvenile prosecutor, but it also gives a lot more leeway for them to work out things that are not listed in RCW, for example, if that makes sense. If I get somebody who is operating on a sidewalk recklessly driving, but let's say I'll use popping willies. Let's take the other one off. If I cite it under this, it's a municipal issue, it's a municipal code, right? Versus an RCW reckless driving goes on their driving record. That creates a driving record for that individual at 14 years old. The chances of them getting their license until they're 18 drastically go up when I'm charging RCWs. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but so.
So you're.
Isn't that a larger deterrent than what we're creating?
I guess the question becomes, and one of the things that have kind of came up during public safety and some of the others is how far, how much punishment do we want to give the kids? And I think, you know, I think most of y'all have said something similar of how far do we want to go? This allows the juvenile courts and even the municipal courts to have a little bit more leeway as far as not being on the full side of the extent of an RCW being enforced, where now it's being reported to DOL and things like that. Because it's not a moving violation under the RCWs. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, yes.
It kind of separates the two so that you have a little bit more leeway or the courts have a little bit more leeway. I don't have the leeway except in which way I cite.
Right, right, right.
Right? Then the courts take it and go, you can, we can, if I cite it under the municipal code, it's not going on their, necessarily going to go on their driving record and affect them long term.
Sure.
Versus a short-term effect.
In the, and then the X's and O's real quick. Say we pass this. It's the 21st of October. I think one thing we've talked about in our council work study is this is a bit of a PR campaign too, right? Like we got to get this out. So how do you, what is your expectation on like rolling that out to maybe like actually making citations? Like is there a runway on this? Or are we turning around next week and saying?
So as I stated in the work study, we've been working on PR for at least the entire little over 18 months that I've been in the city, in working for the city as Snacquami as the captain and now the interim chief. We worked with Bree on putting that PR out. That's not going to change. What we're going to do is I would, you know, this is just my suggestion and I'll leave it to over here for that decision and ultimately for y'all. But setting a date of when we're going to enact it and using that time between now and then to continue that PR to potentially hold, you know, like I'm going to be holding a coffee with a cop where we would be discussing things like that and we can just get that message out there along with putting messages out both from the police department and the city on social media, putting something in the paper. There would have to be something. We're not just going to go out and turn around and go boom, here it is.
Okay. Thanks.
Any more clarifying questions? Mr. Gottelf?
Yeah, can you, can you clarify? Because I know there's been testimony. If, if you're an adult, you're using it in the right way, that the law is applicable, this will not affect those law-abiding 16-year-olds and up riding this bike as long as they're following the regulated RCWs.
Correct. So if you're 16 years old, you have your motor, your driver's license, you have a motorcycle endorsement, the vehicle is registered and it is properly, let's say it's operating at night and it's properly equipped with the lighting and all that that is required and those RCWs are listed out, then you're perfectly fine as long as you're following all the rules of the road.
Clarify that a little further. The where it will affect you, whether your mother is operating them in areas where you shouldn't be. So inside our parks.
Yes.
On our bioswales, near our trails, that type of stuff. Whether you're an adult or a child would not be allowed.
So both, both cities have ordinances on operating motor vehicles in parks. Those would be applicable to anybody. It doesn't matter what your age is. So if you're driving a car through Torgerson Park, I'm just picking one. You are applicable to that municipal code, basically. And same thing, whether it's an e-motorcycle or whatever, it's a motor vehicle.
Okay, I think I've got everybody.
Oh, Mayor, just one, yeah, just want to, I'm sorry, just want to highlight one, one typo. The agenda bill is AB 25 dot 114 dash 114. And then the, in the alternative sections of the agenda bill, it says alternative one, two, and three references AB 25 dash 115. So those should be changed to dash 114.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification, James. Councilmember Rustic, will you please make the motion?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Motion to approve AB 25 dash 114, an ordinance adopting NBMC chapter 10.18 to define and regulate electric motorcycles as a first and final reading.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Rustic. It's seconded by Councilmember Gottelf. Councilmember Rustic, would you like to comment to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So I appreciate the dialogue here with regard to all this and I appreciate that, all the work that staff and our interim chief has put into this to try and get it to be something that is going to add safety to our community, both those that ride these motorcycles as well as those pedestrians that are, and, and drivers who are around these. And so I am going to support this. I feel like it's a step in the right direction for us to enhance the safety and I appreciate everybody's support. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gottelf.
I'm going to make kind of the same statement I made before. It's important for us to do something here than not do something. At least in this incident, we have had accidents that have happened. That was what drove this. We're beginning to see more and more parents buy these for their kids. And you're beginning to see them in our parks and our, our walkways. In fact, I was walking my dog the other day and there were at least five kids in one area as I was going through Si View who were using the bioswales to run across and they were e-motocycles. I had to kind of move out of my way so I didn't get hit. And I think we need clarification. And from the standpoint, we need clarification now before the holidays come when parents say, ooh, this is a fun item for us to buy our kids and hopefully educate them. I do agree with Councilman Arlo Trinalata that we do need to have a good campaign, marketing campaign to get this information out. So they understand if you want to buy it for your kids, there are places where you can use them and there aren't places. It's no different than, you know. It's no different than, you know, a a regular mo off-road motorcycle is where this should be run, not on our in our in our parks, not on our bioswales and not on, you know, walkways where people walk their dogs and ride their bikes. Um, so I hope we can come to some compromise that makes everybody happy and at least get a six to one on this one, too. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Gottlef for your comments. Council, do you have any other additional comments you wish to make? Uh, Councilmember
Me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Pick one, pick one. Okay, um, yeah, I'm going to support this. Um, this has been a long time coming. We've been working on this, I think, since March this year. And so um, there's been a lot of whittling away as to what we needed. Um, Chief has been talking to other entities, seeing what they're doing. And so there's been a lot of work behind this and then city staff and Bree. I mean, it's going to be nice to have this finally come to a conclusion where we actually have something in the books in our local laws. And then um, again, we're going to probably do some sort of marketing program, really get the message out there. And by doing all this, I think we're really going to prevent some tragedies from happening by getting this done. So um, so I'm glad we're finally here.
Great, uh, Councilmember Colin.
I, in fact, do support this because they have to be 16, they have to have a license, they have to have appropriate. The motorcycle, e-motorcycle has to be set up appropriately, like a re- a regular motorcycle. And so for that, I do approve it. Anybody else?
Councilmember Trimalata.
Yeah, I understand the sentiments. Um, I won't support it. I spoke to a ton of parents over the last three weeks, uh, all owners of e-motorscycles. Um, I think from a policymaking standpoint, I think it's redundant. Um, I think this is a larger issue than North Bend. Uh, I frankly think it's an Olympia problem, not a North Bend problem. Um, the RCW does the what we're attempting to do or what we're thinking is going to happen is a deterrent. Um, I think as much as we had a a boisterous work study, um, we're going to be making a policy and asking the chief to implement this. And then we're going to go through a transition of police services and we've yet to hear from King County on how they're dealing with this in their unincorporated areas, any ideas that they're seeing. Um, we've mentioned Mercer Island. I I'd like to see some empirical evidence on, you know, i- is their legislation making any difference? Um, most of the the parents I talked to uh are, I feel like that this is something that's being taken away from them. Um, and I think there's there's a number of both park municipal code and RCW that protects against some of this. I think that the e-motorscycles are going to exist whether we make this uh code or not. And and frankly, we've got bigger problems of public safety and I I don't want our public safety uh officers spending time chasing a 14 year old kid on an e-bike. Um, I I think there's bigger issues that we want them focused on. Uh, and I just think it's a missed priority here. Um, so I I won't support it. I I will, I will welcome the continued conversation if it becomes a problem. Um, but I just, I haven't seen the emails. I haven't gotten the phone calls. I haven't seen the evidence that this is a a problem that we need to address.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Elwood.
Thank you, Your Honor. I I guess where I'm getting confused is what I'm hearing tonight from my colleagues is that this is going to make our road safer. We're going to have a marketing campaign. Um, it's addressing concerns, but what I'm hearing is that we already have those concerns addressed. We already have ordinances of where you can ride motorcycles. I don't understand how creating redundancy in this law will will make the community safer. I really, I really don't make that connection. Um, in fact, if I understood the chief uh philosophy here, which got me a little bit thinking about it more, which is creating a municipal code will differentiate from the RCWs. Presently, if um the chief is going to arrest somebody and this person is going to be prosecuted, the laws that those folks are currently facing are more stiff than what we're passing here. So I don't know how that makes things safer. The other thing, too, is when I think about a marketing campaign, I would be more terrified learning about what I just learned now about the RCWs than we've passed this new law. I just don't understand how it's going to make anything safer. The redundancies don't make sense. And then on top of it, I'm I'm concerned that we do have a transition of law enforcement power here soon. And so we're going to pass this. Maybe there's a marketing uh junket campaign trail. Who knows how long until it gets enforced? But presently, our officers are already enforcing the current laws in place. So I don't feel that this is an appropriate time to add more layers of legislation on top of something that's already seemingly well covered with the current codes and the current RCWs that we have in place. And I definitely don't know or see the connective tissue on how this is going to make our community safer, especially um given the 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 testimony that I heard from Chief today. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I've caught everybody. I'm so sorry, Mayor Pro-Tam.
My favorite word balance, of course. Um, I think it is a problem. I, you know, I have witnessed uh kids on these bikes and uh my framing that I've developed is that these e-motocyclers are no different than a regular motorcycle. That's what this ordinance says. That's what state law says. Um, I see this as an additional tool in the toolbox of law enforcement to help educate um kids who are riding around on these bikes that I witness. And it frightens me and I think that they need to be brought in line. And I think it's an appropriate stance as government to say, these are motorcycles. And that's what I read this ordinance to do. Um, it might be uh reciting existing state law. It does put it in one place. It creates a local ordinance that can be put on a sign that says you can't ride an e-motorcycle here and cite a local ordinance. And I think that that's to the benefit uh and does add to the sense of safety in our community as we educate folks. Um, it's a path forward. Uh, it's past time that we put something on the books in this regard and move forward and modify it as need be uh as uh things change going forward. So I will be voting in support, thanks.
Thank you again, my apologies. Um, I think we're prepared for a vote here. Let's do it. Motion before us is to approve AB twenty-five dash one one four, an ordinance adopting NBMC Chapter ten dot eighteen to define and regulate electric motorcycles as a first and final reading. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion does pass five to two. Thank you, everybody. Moving right along to mayor, council and administrator concerns and initiatives. Let's start with Mr. Elwood at the top of the table here.
If you guys are looking for something to do this week, the 25th, I believe, um, Valley Center Stage is putting on a one night, one night only stage reading. It's a radio play adaptation of Edgar Allan Poe, uh, big casts comedy. So come on out, support two local uh nonprofits in doing this, The Grange, The Slough Grange, as well as Valley Center Stage. Um, and check out the show. It should be a hoot. I haven't seen it yet, but I've talked with many people who are working on it and they're thinking it's a blast. So please check us out. Bye.
Sounds like fun. Is Ms. Torgeson? Nothing at this time. Very much, Ms. Cohen.
Yes, so ballots have dropped and now is the time to vote. So if you are not registered, you can register at vote.gov and get your ballots in before November 5th.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Trimalata.
Stole my thunder. Vote, vote, vote. You're right, you should do it. I mean, get engaged.
Wonderful. Um, we'll skip over Mr. Gottlef for just a moment. We'll go back to Mayor Pardon. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gottlef. It's your time.
Okay, well, I want to thank my fellow council members. These last two items, I know were contentious. It's been a lot of conversation. I do understand the two people that have chose not to have voted for it and I understand the reasons. Um, but it's something that was brought to us back in March by our police uh chief and current police be uh to give them more opportunities and more uh things to do to to solve these problems. And again, uh, we are seeing other jurisdictions like Isaquah, Mercer Island and some others that have passed it. So I want to thank you for the hard work on that. Um, again, I'm but my my continual response to people kind of running through our uh roundabouts pretty quick. Slowing down would be great. Somebody is going to get hurt if we don't see that happen. I continue to see people running through. We have crosswalks that kind of run right through them. And please be careful, it's dark earlier and we'll get earlier. And again, coming up, we've got Halloween, so the kids will be out there and trick or treating. So hopefully everybody will have a safe trick or treating. Thank you.
Excellent, Councilmember Rustic.
Yes, thank you. Um, I I appreciate the profound dialogue tonight and that we were all listening to each other and trying to uh work towards solutions. So thank you for that. I also want to say thank you to the Public Works team. Um, in my neighborhood, there were a number of sidewalks that were uh being up. Uh, the roots of the trees were lifting the sidewalks and I actually also somehow managed to trip on them. And uh, anyway, watching, so I got to watch firsthand the Public Works Committee or Public Works Team come in efficiently, uh, remove the trees, remove the sidewalk, replace the sidewalk. And it was so well orchestrated. I was looking out my window as I was working. I thought, wow, you know, they're really, they really do that well. So anyway, all that to say thank you. I I appreciate it, so.
Thank you so much, Mr. Joss.
Um, I'll just reiterate what Councilmember Rustic said. I appreciate the back and forth and I think we're getting actually better in terms of moving forward and reaching positive outcomes together and that's worth something. So that's all, thank you.
City Administrator Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to James for championing this e-motor scooter motorcycle and the scooter ordinance since I think March it was, I think Councilmember Torgeson said that. So thank you to James for all of his tireless work on this project, moving this forward.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Okay, the city of North, the city and North Bend Downtown Foundation will be hosting Trick or Treat Street on Saturday, October 25th in downtown North Bend from three o'clock to 5:00 PM. This free event features over 50 participating local businesses. Please come dressed in your most spirited garb for family friendly trick or treating. Community is invited to join the North Bend Downtown Foundation at the Train Depot on Monday, October 27th from four to 5:00 PM for their monthly meetup cleanup. Supplies are provided, everything from gloves to grabby sticks to high visibility vests and garbage bags. Uh, just show up to help beautify downtown North Bend and meet new people and get uh those voluntary hours in. The city and Northwest Railway Museum are working together on the Railroad Crossing Capital Project, a federally funded grant project that will improve a total of four railroad crossings in North Bend. State Route 202, also known as Bendigo Boulevard, between West Park Street and West North Bend Way will be closed from 7:00 PM Sunday, October 26th through 5:00 AM Friday, October 31st. And Main Street or Main Avenue South, excuse me, between West Park Street and East McClellan Street will be closed from 7:00 PM Sunday, November 2nd through 5:00 AM Friday, November 7th. Finally, as this is our last meeting prior to, please remember Tuesday, November 4th is election day. We all know that. Please do your due diligence, your your right to do that. Please remember to exercise your right. Uh, the deadline to register to vote is October 27th. Your participation is vital to ensure our representation democracy continues. In addition to the mail in pop option, a drop box for ballots is located at the North Bend Library at 115 East Fourth Street. Additional information is available on the city's website. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council tonight for this arduous and very important conversation. Thank you very much. Have a great night and be safe.
Move, will you adjourn?
Move to be adjourned. Thank you, thank you so much. Let's go.